Calling to order the regular meeting of the Bloomfield Hills Schools Board of Education, August 26, 2024. Trustee Noble, can you please take attendance?
Everyone's here except for trustee Kumar.
Thank you. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving on to Section 2A, the administrative appointment of Claire Frick, the Director of Finance. This will be presented by Candace Moynihan, our Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations.
Superintendent West and members of the Board of Education, I am pleased to stand before you today to welcome Claire Frick as the new Director of Finance for Bloomfield Hills Schools. Claire Frick holds a Bachelor of Business Administration from Walsh College and an Associate of General Studies from Oconom Community College. Claire is a Certified School Payroll Specialist through Michigan School Business Officials and is currently pursuing a Michigan School Business Official CFO certification, expected for completion in June 2025. Claire has eight years of experience in finance in several different roles, including Accounting Clerk, Financial Analyst, and Accounting Specialist. Most recently, she has served as the Finance Controller for Madison Public Schools, responsible for the district's financial reporting, grant accounting, and all payroll activities. While at Madison, Claire also served as the Interim Director of Finance for a period of six months. Claire is recently married, and outside of work, she enjoys working out and reading. I can also say very excited to bring her to the team. I think she's going to bring a high level of energy, and so at this time, I would like to welcome Claire Frick.
Thank you, Candace. I am so excited to be here and extremely grateful for the opportunity to provide for the district and give the students the best opportunities with financial transparency.
Thank you very much for being here. All right, is there a motion?
I move the Board of Education to appoint Claire Frick as the Director of Finance with an effective date of August 27, 2024.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Welcome. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
All right, moving on to Section B, Administrative Appointment of Catherine Hunt, Special Education Supervisor. This will be presented by Laura Bokar, our Director of Special Education.
I move the Board of Education appoint Catherine Hunt as the Special Education Supervisor of Deaf and Harder Hearing Program with the effective date of August 27, 2024.
Hello, President Hill, Superintendent West, thank you, and the rest of the board. Thank you so much for the opportunity to bring this exciting appointment to you. I am honored to stand before you to welcome Ms. Catherine Hunt as our new DHH Supervisor here in Bloomfield. Catherine attended Saginaw Valley State University, where she earned a Bachelor's of Arts in Special Education, Elementary Education, a Master's of Arts in Teaching with a Focus on Special Education, a Master's of Arts in Education with an Emphasis on Education Principalship, and an Educational Specialist Degree in Central Office Administration and Special Education. She has 14 years of experience in education, including roles as a special education teacher, special education consultant, district MTSS coordinator, and an elementary principal. She has also led a district summer camp and facilitated district-wide initiatives on wellness, mental health, and social emotional learning. Catherine and her family, her husband Darcy, who's here with us tonight, and her daughters Abigail and Eleanor have been busy with the recent move to Lake Orion from Schwartz Creek, and they are settling into their new home, and they have two adorable golden doodles that are finding their way towards us as well. So we are thrilled to have her. Welcome, Catherine.
Thank you. Let's hold off just a moment. Based on that commentary, based on the motion, and we do have a second from trustee Noble, do we have any further discussion after that introduction? No? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 6-0. So, welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. Thank you for having me. As Laura discussed, my husband RC and I have been so humbled to be welcomed with open arms to Oakland County. We are just so excited to bring all that we have to service the students and the families, and our children are so excited to attend school here. There are so many wonderful things and opportunities, and we are just so humbled that we have been accepted into our districts that we can now call home. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes Section 2 of our agenda. Moving on to Section 3, our first superintendent-- I'm sorry, no, not our first. I missed the July meeting. I was sick.
Yes, I was here.
My apologies. Our second superintendent's report from Superintendent Rick West.
Yes, thank you, President Hill. A few updates for the community. First of all, I want to thank the community for your support in our operating mileage renewal that happened on August 6th. We had a 20-year mileage renewal approved by the voters, which just creates a tremendous stability for the district for years to come, and we are extremely grateful to you for that support and look forward to being good stewards of that as we move forward. Our welcome back. We are excited to welcome our staff back to Bloomfield Hills tomorrow, Bloomfield Hills High School tomorrow morning. So they are going to come back. I will welcome them back with a brief message, and then we have a week of professional development and working in the classrooms and preparing, of course, for our students to come back next week. Welcome back, families. I hope that everyone had a safe and relaxing final long weekend of summer. On Tuesday of next week, September 3rd, we'll welcome students in most of our schools, and I'm excited to feel the energy and see the staff and students interact during their first week of school. I'll tell you, I was out to the high school today and got to see a number of kids participating in many different activities, and it was just so energizing and so exciting. So I look forward to being in full swing next week, having our teachers and our staff engaged in welcoming our kids back. That's what we're here for, and I look forward to seeing that in full swing next week. So, entry plan, are we-- nope, I think that's it.
Awesome.
So, thank you.
Thank you for that update. Moving on to Section 4, the Board's Presidents' Report. Just a couple items to touch on here. Tonight, we're finishing the swing on our engagement with the Michigan Leadership Institute regarding our contract for our search for our superintendent. So, as a part of the engagement with MLI, we're going to, in order to conduct the superintendent's search, the governance team will be engaging in facilitated dialogue on the principles of board governance, the roles of the governance team in establishing communication protocols, and agreed-upon norms. This will be conducted as a special meeting board workshop, following this evening's meeting being adjourned. So we're looking forward to that conversation, which will help get us some good rules of the road established with Superintendent West before we officially start the school year next week. Superintendent onboarding over the last 90 days, fortunately Superintendent West has kept us well up to date on his 90-day plan. I will say he's very committed to details and following through on what he said he was going to do, and he's been very busy, as he's indicated, meeting with a lot of people, spending a lot of time with our community, and I think the timing has been really nice for him to be so fully immersed in meeting people and establishing relationships this summer, so that when we begin next week, that'll be a nice smooth transition for him. So that's great. In the first, on September 10th at 6:30, we're going to be going through superintendent evaluation training. Michigan law has changed and requires that all public school boards adopt and implement a rigorous, transparent, and fair performance evaluation system for all teachers and school administrators pursuant to amended Sections 1249 and 1249B of the revised school code. The Board of Education will be conducting its training of the new requirements during a special meeting board workshop, as I had already indicated, on September 10th at 6:30. Lastly, we have an election coming up for three board positions this fall, and the League of Women Voters will be hosting a candidate forum here at Booth on Monday, September 16th at 6:30 PM. There are seven candidates running for three seats, four-year terms, beginning January 1st, 2025. The forum will be livestreamed, cablecast, and recorded for the community's later viewing. And that is it for my update. Moving on to Section 5, public comment. Rebecca, do we have any public comment?
No.
All right, we don't have any public comment. Moving on to Section 6, the consent agenda.
All right, I'll just jump into it, since there's no way to really jump into this other than to squarely look at it in its face and say that, you know, looking at the principles of a good board service and looking at what we do with a consent agenda, you're allowed to remove an item if you disagree with anything on there, and vote for it separately if anyone has a, you know, issue with any of these items, but usually we vote on them as one. These are standard practices and things to go over, all inclusive. So if anyone has any of the items on here or anything to say about any particular one, you can pull it out, but if not, we can vote on it as a group.
All right.
Okay. So I move the Board of Education to approve the recommendations detailed in the consent agenda and presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I do have one thing to question on, and maybe it's somewhere, I don't know yet, but do we have an active repository of any of the separations, like the exit interviews that are collected actively for any of the current separations in the personnel report?
We do not have any that we would share.
Not sharing here.
I can tell you that we have had conversations, Mr. McDonald and myself have had conversations. He shared with me a summary of the last several exits, but we have not formalized a process of exit interviews at this time. Something that we're looking to do. He has had a number of exit conversations, though, that he has summarized. So, that's something--
I know we had it for, like, students, right? Like, a student exited the district, we collected that information, and I think we had it in a regular report of, here are the primary reasons, whether they moved or whatever it was, and I think something similar for this would be helpful, so that we kind of, it doesn't have to be low-level detail, just a high level, here are the primary drivers. Obviously, a lot happens in the summer, I know that, so that's probably a lot of it, but just an indicator, so that we kind of have our pulse on it, I think would be helpful.
That's something that we're going to work toward in making sure that we understand throughout the organization why people would choose to leave.
Sure, okay.
I would just say, in that, we would have to be, obviously, be very mindful of confidentiality and, you know, sharing objective student data about, you know, comments about, high level, about leaving would be different than sharing publicly. I don't know that you're indicating share publicly. You're just wanting to know if there are process.
Even just general buckets for us to know, not for us, for the district to know things that, what are the reasons, what are the drivers, just to know what are those indicators. Some of it, again, I know in the summertime, a lot happens, and it's, you know, I have teachers and educators in my family, and I know it's always in flux in the summer, but just so that we have our finger on the pulse to know if there are any things that we need to have more attention into in certain areas as to why, and it could be just big buckets rather than specifics.
That's something our team will look for. I mean, typically, you're going to say, people are leaving because of wages, culture, location, those buckets, I think, that you're alluding to, and it's something that we'll work toward.
Okay.
Any further discussion on that?
No, I agree with Todd.
Okay. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Moving on to Section 7, the Board Business. Section A, ratification of the contract with the Bloomfield Hills Association of Paraeducators. Do we have a motion?
I move the Board of Education to approve the contract with the Bloomfield Hills Association of Paraeducators as presented by--
A second?
All right, as part of the dialogue, we will hear from Keith McDonald, our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources.
Good evening. The Board and Association of Paraeducators of Bloomfield Hills bargained their contract over the spring and into the summer. Jordan Harris, who was our interim Assistant Superintendent of HR, was the lead negotiator for the district, and Scott Worwell, who is the MEA Executive Director for our MEA groups, was the lead negotiator for the Paraeducators. They reached an agreement. The Paras have ratified that agreement within their association. You've been provided by Mr. Harris with a summary of that agreement, and tonight is the opportunity for you to vote on that.
Any discussion? I will just indicate that I've had an opportunity to review this and the parameters extensively with Superintendent West, and I understand the ins and outs of the discussions that occurred and where we landed, and I want to thank both sides for the extensive work that they took part in to make sure that Bloomfield Hills remains competitive in this regard and that we have a good solution moving forward into the school year. So thank you to everyone on both sides for all the work you put into this. Any further discussion? All right, let's move to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, the motion passes 6-0.
All right, now I want to reiterate what you just said and thank both teams on their work on behalf of both the district and the Paraeducators, and would like to also offer Mr. Worwell an opportunity to come up and address the board at this time.
Thank you very much, Mr. McDonald, and as you know, I'm Scott Worwell. I represent six of your units here, and I want to take this time to thank the Board of Education for its participation and role in listening to Paraeducators, in valuing them as part of this community and for our Bloomfield Hills students. They passed the contract overwhelmingly. It was ratified, and we're much appreciative. I would also like an opportunity to thank members of my team here. Some of them are back there. Jen Vesutic, excuse me, is the President of the Union, as well as Sarah Fowler, who's not here, Lisa Rhodes, you see behind you, as well as Sharon McLafflin. All of them were instrumental working over the summer and the spring, many hours. And I would like to thank members of the Boards' team, the Administration team. There were a number of people involved. Jordan Harris, as Mr. McDonald already mentioned, as well as Stacy Wigton, Laura Boka, Linda Swider, Jason Ort, and Michelle Feig Lang were those individuals involved. There may have left someone out. There were a number over the time period, and we're very happy to put this behind us and look forward to a productive and effective and exciting year for students. Thank you again.
Thank you. All right, moving on to Section B, ratification of the contract with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees. This will be presented, well, first of all, do we have a motion?
I move the Board of Education to approve the contract with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees as presented.
Is there a second?
Second, yes.
All right, then I'll present it for explanation and discussion. Keith McDonald, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources.
All right. AFSCME is our union that encapsulates our maintenance and operations folks, as well as our transportation, so our drivers, mechanics, and bus aides. We met starting up in June and reached an agreement early this summer, and you have been provided with details of that agreement. It was a very cooperative partnership, and only, I think, took a couple meetings to settle on the contract.
My commentary on this would be this exact same as the one before. We were kept up to date on the details. I appreciate the details, all the work that went into the settlement of this. Thank you to both sides for all you did to reach this conclusion. Does anyone else have any other comments they'd like to add? All right, are we ready to vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, motion passes 6-0.
All right, I would also like to thank both teams for all of their efforts, and Mr. Bilal, who is one of our HVAC, Lead HVAC individuals, he is their president and is unable to make it here because he starts work at 4:30 in the morning and lives over an hour away. So he asked if he could do a video, and I said, sure, why not?
This is fun.
And Cory promised me this would work.
Good evening. My name is Chris Bilal. I am President of Local 1628. Our members include Skilled Trade, Maintenance, Grounds, Custodial, and Transportation. On behalf of the men and women of these departments, I would like to thank the Board members for their continued support. Our highest mission is to provide a clean, comfortable, and secure environment. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Bill. Thank you all. Thank you.
Well, I can reiterate that he created a comfortable environment, because the ongoing issues we've had in this room--
So you know--
Apparently, three hours ago, we didn't have any--
Three hours ago, it wasn't like this. So he came over here and made sure this was working today.
I'd like to say that there was no correlation between the approval and our comfortable air, but it is nice and a perk, so thank you. Thank you. All right, moving on to Section B, request to award bid number 1048 asbestos abatement at Fox Hills. Do we have a motion?
I move the Board of Education to approve bid number 1048 asbestos abatement Fox Hills in the amount of $98,250 with 20% contingency to Qualified Abatement Services, Inc. for a not-to-exceed amount of $117,900 funded by the 2020 Bond Fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, to facilitate discussion, we have David Goldman with us this evening from Plant Marine Real Point, as well as Jake McDermott, our Director of Maintenance and Operations. I can speak on behalf of the Board when I know that we were, I was given a heads-up on the 20% contingency ask, and so we look forward to hearing some of the rationale behind that, and thank you for being here to discuss this with us.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you for having me. Really, the 20% comes in line because of the small dollar amount, well, the small-ish dollar amount for the abatement. There are still some unknowns, as they didn't remove all the cabinetry and everything like that to do their initial report. So if anything were to come up that was a major item, it would probably surpass that 10% that you guys normally approve. So thus, we are asking for an additional 10%, just to help cover if there are unexpected hot material found within the building.
Thank you. I personally understand the nature of the substance you're dealing with and what the delay in having to come back to the Board to ask for that would cause, and it would be a big issue. So I certainly understand the reason there and the need to be agile on the project. Does anyone else have any discussion or questions?
Not this time, I do not.
All right, are we ready to vote? All those in favor?
We got John.
Sorry, John.
It's fine. I just, with all of these contingent percentages and dollar amounts, it would just be nice if we had a report if and when the money is used, you know, so that we know, oh, we found X, Y, Z, because I don't think we usually know how much ends up getting spent out of--
This is an ongoing issue that we bring up and would like to discuss.
Yep, I don't have it with us tonight.
I'm personally not going to pick on you for it tonight under this, but we're not forgetting that.
That's fine.
Right? Is that what you're alluding to?
Yeah, generally--
It would be really nice to see that soon, the breakdown that we've been asking for on this point, what percentage of time we reach the full max. We've been talking about this for quite some time. Tonight might not be the night to dig in on it, because now you're asking for more, and it's understandable why, but it is continuing to be an item that the Board wants to discuss.
Understood.
With that, are we ready to vote?
Yeah.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Thank you.
I'll stay up.
Oh, yes, sorry. You still have fun stuff to talk about. Moving on to E, request to approve replacement stadium track lighting at North Hills Middle School.
Oh.
Oh, shoot, sorry. I already crossed the head. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Section D, request to award bid package number 10, Fox Hills Building Demolition. Oh, this big one to skip. Any motion?
I move the Board of Education to award bid package number 10, Fox Hills Building Demolition, to international construction in the amount of $358,000 with a 10% contingency for a not-tixie total of $3,993, wait, $393,800 and $800 to be paid for using the 2020 Bond Funds.
A second?
Second.
All right, again, to facilitate discussion, David Goldman.
Hello, again. Yeah, so this is, this happens after the asbestos and hot material are removed from the building. Obviously, the plan has been in place to tear down that building. They have, the program has recently moved over to Blooming East at their new facility, and it seems like everything's going really well over there. The contractor will obviously get rid of the building and restore the land to where the building is to start growing grass, et cetera.
Any further discussion?
I was going to ask, like, when we say restore, does it mean green space? Like, it's like a green space, kids can play on it, but we're not going to have necessarily equipment on it yet, because that's not a part of this.
That's correct. It will start to grow seed and sod, and, you know, yes, it will be a larger park than what's there right now.
Okay, and then--
Are you saying that this includes, once they remove all the debris, then they're going to plant grass for us?
Yeah, I think it's--
That includes for all that.
I think it's seeded, but yes, there will be some maintenance of some grass.
Okay, thank you.
There's currently a playground there. Are they raising the playground as well, or would that--
There's a couple of pieces that are deemed not real safe, so we're going to get rid of those. I think a couple of the pieces moved over to Blooming East as well recently, so there might be a few pieces of equipment that are left, but nothing.
We ended up taking all the good equipment out of the Fox Hills site, and we needed it for the program at Blooming East. So what you're going to see is real similar to the Pine Lake site. We're going to make it green space. You'll still have parking. We'll still have the athletic fields, but for the most part, it's just going to be an open green area.
So the two parking, the circle and the regular parking lot will remain, is that what we're hearing?
Correct, yep.
And is it functional during demo, or is it like, it's going to be closed off during demo?
We'd probably close that area off to demo, just because of the amount of construction workers and heavy equipment we'll have on site. So the only thing that we will probably pull off that site would be the Fox Hills Turtle, and we're talking about relocating that over to the Nature Center.
Are we going to continue to rent the Fox Hills facility for sports events, like soccer games?
To my knowledge, yes, and that would be something I would have to confirm with athletics.
And we're going to keep those in good shape?
We will do our best.
All right.
What was the budget for demolition? I'm sorry if I don't have that number in front of me.
The original budget?
I think it was in the 300.
We'd have to get you the exact number.
Yeah, I think it was higher than that.
I know that a lot of fall practices are held there for some of the rec programs.
PHYSO, yeah.
Yeah.
Games and practice.
Yeah, we're not going to neglect the area. We're still going to maintain it, still in a rotation of maintenance and lining the fields and taking care of it.
Just as far as being able to get into that location in the fall, or when is this taking place?
Starting.
How long will the demo last?
Yeah, this is going to take place, this will be after, yeah, after what you're talking about.
Yeah, they're going to start probably in the late fall with the, you know, asbestos, they have to do a lot of the asbestos removal, and then, you know, late fall, early winter, the building will be taken down.
Thank you. I appreciate your patience with our questions. Community members ask us a lot about these buildings and the details, and so we can have discussion here. It helps a lot of people who are very curious about all the details, so thank you.
Because it really does sit right nestled in, like, homes, are we going to also make sure we communicate to the community when this demolition starts to take place for safety reasons? Thank you.
Yeah, we can work with Communications, I know, to make sure that something goes out to the homeowners.
Thank you.
I don't think we voted. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes 6-0. Thank you. Moving to E now, request to approve replacement stadium track lighting at North Hills Middle School. Jacob McDermott, our Director of Maintenance and Operations.
I move the Board of Education to approve the replacement of the stadium track lights at North Hills Middle School in the amount of $206,360 with the addition of the 10% contingency of $20,636 to Voss Lighting Supply using pricing per the OmniCooperative Purchasing Contract, bringing the total approved budget to $226,996 to be funded by the Co-Curricular Endowment Fund, Special Route New Fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, to facilitate discussion, Mr. McDermott, is there anything, any color you want to add, or anything you want to discuss?
We've been--
Unless there's questions?
No, I mean, we've been getting a lot of community complaints and concerns about this, and same with athletics, so this is a pretty big project to get wrapped up and, you know, kind of handled, and kind of happy to have this presented to the Board tonight. you know, kind of handled, and kind of happy to have this presented to the Board tonight.
Any other further discussion?
I know we were kind of briefed on it, but essentially, the older light bulbs are continuing to go out, so when they do turn the lights on, it gets less and less light out, so they're replacing those bulbs with-
We're not, so you can't just replace the bulbs, because unfortunately, they're metal halide, and we can't get those replacement parts, so, and you can't just take a burnt-out bulb and put a LED driver inside it. So, because of that, because of the way it shines on the field, the lights have to come off completely, and all new LEDs have to come out. So, what was in the board packet was the layout that VOS lighting supplied and how it was going to properly light the field, and this field is a little unique because of the placement of the poles, so that, that would have gave a lot of dark spots, and the last thing we need is an injury on the field from a lacrosse ball or something, because it went into a dark spot.
One thing, kudos to Candace, I think, I think we discussed this at July meeting, this is actually being paid for out of an endowment fund that we found that were in our books that were, that was allocated to this, so this isn't coming out of the sinking fund or any other capital improvement fund. It's coming out of an endowment fund, which is specifically used for purposes like this.
Good call, Paul, that was a great catch, Candace. Thank you for that. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No, motion passes six-zero.
Thank you. That's why I said it, Michelle.
All right, is there, the last item is adjourned, is there any other board business that we need to address?
I do have a board item I would like to add to the agenda.
Sure.
It's for October. I have a conflict on the 28th of October during our board meeting. Do I have to say something to add this to the agenda now?
I think you can make a motion.
Oh, make a motion to add?
To add it to the agenda, and then a motion for the agenda item.
Okay. I make a motion to add this agenda item to the agenda.
Do you, are you making a motion to add the October study session and board meeting date for discussion? Is that what you're doing?
Yes, that's what I'd like to add.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion regarding adding this as an agenda item?
Is the-
Wait, we're not discussing the agenda item yet, we're just discussing adding it to the agenda. Is there any discussion regarding adding it to the agenda?
No.
All those in favor of adding it to the agenda?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay. Motion passes six-zero, it's now on the agenda. Now, go ahead and make your motion, which I think is to change the date of the meeting, is that correct?
Yeah, I am making a motion to change the October 28th date of the meeting to a different date that works for the majority of this Board here today, or whatever suits everyone, but I'm hoping not on that Monday.
Okay. I guess my first question would be, you know, we have, I appreciate you have a conflict that night, so I think that the question we all need to discuss is, there's frequently times when Board members do have conflicts, all of us do miss at various times here and there for different reasons, and I'm concerned, doesn't mean I'm opposed, but I am concerned about the habit of changing board meetings just because one person isn't available. So, I guess my question to you is, is there a reason for, in this particular case, why you're looking to have it changed, or is it just, I'm just concerned because of all the amount of staff that we have around, that are planned around these meetings and the things that we have going on, people that have to accommodate, so if there's a compelling reason and other trustees might have a different opinion, I'm just wondering if there's something particular about that night that-
I just thought that perhaps everyone is available the Tuesday, you know, because I don't want to miss any meetings, I know it's important to be here, so I thought I would set it in front of the Board to see if anyone's willing to change it like we have in the past, and I would be very appreciative. This is not like a policy of missing meetings, so I would like to attend, and that's why I brought it to the Board.
Got it, okay.
It's really as simple as that, I really want to join everyone.
Got it, got it, okay. Any other discussion from any other Board members?
No, I think we've made accommodations in the past, so if it works for people's schedule, I'm open on it. I'll make Tuesday work.
I can tell you I can't make Tuesday work, but I'm not opposed to moving it to another date. If the majority, I think that first we needed to see if the majority is agreeing to move it, and if so, what would be the date that we agree upon. And my concern, too, is if he's not here, to be able to give his availability, because we might end up picking a date, then he's not available.
If that's what you're-
Well, help me think through it.
Depends on the date, so I think I responded, I think a note went out, I responded that the only date I can do that week would be Tuesday, I couldn't do Wednesday through Friday. Doesn't necessarily mean if we moved it to a date, I couldn't be there, I just wouldn't, to your point earlier, I would have to miss the meeting.
We have a meeting next month, right, so between now and then, we could send out a few dates that would work for all of the staff, and if any of those dates happen to work, then we can put it on the agenda for next meeting, vote on it, and it'll be ready for the following meeting. If no dates match up for all seven of us, it doesn't make sense to change it, so that one person can go and then another person can't go. So, I would suggest that we send out a spreadsheet with some dates that might work for the administration, and if all seven of us can make it to another date, then we vote on it at the next meeting.
Monday, October 21st, if that could potentially work, but I agree, let's not pick tonight.
Yeah.
Let's try and do a shared Google Calendar and pick something that works for everyone, because like I said, we don't want to pick a date tonight without Ziva's input. Superintendent West, you, were you going to say something?
Yeah, I'd recommend also we look at the upcoming agendas, our Cabinet Team is going to continue to review agendas a couple months in advance and see if, I don't know what the Board would feel of maybe moving the agenda items to a different meeting later, and if we can accommodate the schedules. So, if it's just moving those agenda items to November, I don't know if that's a possibility right now, but that's something we could look into, but I would agree with Mr. Van Gammer, if we can look at the schedules over the course of the next month and make the motion in September, it would allow us to appropriately plan as well.
Okay. That's good feedback as well.
I assure you, this won't happen, this is very unusual for me, and that's why I had two months to kind of bring it up to the Board, because I try to attend every meeting, and I like to be here, so.
Understood, understood. Okay, so, tonight, it's been added to the agenda, I think we've agreed that we will discuss an alternate date through Rebecca as our facilitator of that discussion, and then in September, we will readdress the issue, we'll add it to the September agenda, so we can discuss what the new date is. But what are we technically voting on, now that I'm thinking?
The motion.
Yeah, we voted on the discussion, but now the vote is technically to move the date, but we haven't picked one yet, so we can vote to move this agenda item to the[1776.66]